City Council meeting. Twenty twenty five.
I pledge allegiance to the states of America. To the republic for which it stands, all the nation. Our God, and the mission, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a new, uh, militia tonight, so good luck.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Welcome to me.
Yeah, welcome. So we will start with the roll call, please.
Thanks. Uh, sorry, councilperson Dean.
Here.
Sexton.
Here.
Or or Han.
Here. I don't know if you can see me now.
Still been here.
All right, um, give me motion someone to approve tonight's agenda.
There.
Um, any discussion, let's go ahead and vote, uh, all's in favor of approving the agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda consists of the approval of the minutes of the June sixteenth regular city council meeting. Um, approval of a class C retail alcohol license for Mexico Lindo. Um, approval of the class C retail alcohol, um, for five day license for the West Branch firefighters in conjunction with Uber's hometown days in August. Um, approval of especially met for men for Izzy's treasures basement sale at Heritage Square. On Friday, July eleventh and twelfth. Uh, approval of a monthly financial report for May and the claims for July. Uh, motion, please.
No move.
Second.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
I have a question on the claim.
Go ahead.
I gotta get the, the, right.
Yeah.
Um. It was something about the library. The library got turned. Mainstay systems. Firewall update library, but yet up above it says. Mainstay.
All departments.
All departments. So what's the difference?
The way it is right now is that all the general fund pays for all of the all the IT services. So it's the general fund. The only difference is is how it's separated by their finances, but it's all coming from the same general fund bucket. And that's even the same with fire department. It comes from the general fund too. The police department comes from the general fund.
Wouldn't it be under one thing? No?
Well, the reason why it's category is that under a zero three one is the library in our code of ordinances is separated from our general fund. So it's just strictly based on how our code was written fifty six years ago. Where they separated them.
That's. Good. Oh, good question.
I have a question.
Yes.
I noticed that on uh, A, eight B. We're approving liability insurance proposal, the ICAP. Then I also seen that we paid ICAP eighty three thousand dollars and seventy seven cents. So if we paid them for something that we're just fixing to approve.
I don't think those checks go out until we approve today.
Good.
That's right. I think all of the checks have been made, but they don't go out until we have approval today, and then they'll go out tomorrow.
Good.
Unless it's there's some things that we okay, right? So there's not late fees and stuff on.
There is part in there that has like between meetings. There's kind of a list. Those go out in between, but the other ones that are listed below that are checks that are made before this meeting, but won't go out until after they're approved.
The only other question I would have has nothing to do with this is there, there you showed up late.
He called.
So do you have any, have any issues with any of the liquor licenses or permits or any of those things?
Uh, which, what specifically are we referring to?
So we have.
High school window.
Mexico window has class C retail li- license. Um, West Branch has, West Branch Fire Department has a special class C retail alcohol. Those two things.
Okay, not, we're not talking about hometown days for just start. Okay, yep, that's fine.
So ours would be for home.
Right, that, no.
But it's a permit and.
Yep, no issue.
Okay. That's all I have.
Good question. All right, hearing no other comments on the claims. It looks like the Greenview light poles are set to write a check, but they aren't even really done yet.
No, it feels like it's all marked out.
Yeah.
Looks like they might be replacing one of the poles or a couple of them.
I assume, I'm assuming that they're, they're.
It's why the stake is back for the pole.
I guess, and then one pole probably looks like it's not very good shape, so.
Which is cool.
There.
You may as well, that's good. I don't think we're paying it, not paying extra.
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't get back yet, but I hadn't drove by there for a little while, but yeah, I think they're, I would rather had it one in Roger's yard, but.
Yeah, me too. Looking forward to it.
They moved it down.
I saw that. So, yeah. All right, uh, hearing no other comments, let's vote, please, on the consent agenda.
Councilperson Bean.
Yeah.
Stillman.
Yes.
Orhan.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Okay, presentation communications open forum. We got a couple on the schedule, so we'll start with those two and then we'll have you, Kim.
Okay.
Um. Park and Rec, um, Aaron.
I'm Aaron Monahan. Different area, yeah. Um, we were asked to come up with, uh, three recommendations for you all to consider for Park and Rec. And, uh, we laid them out kind of one for more short term, one medium term, one longer term. And so the three recommendations that, uh, we would like to put forward for you. Um, for longer term, we would like you to consider, um, formalizing, I guess, uh, some of the early stages of planning for a rec center with a splash pad. And so things maybe like architectural drawings or some of the surveying or whatever might go into that process. Uh, meeting lands, that kind of thing. Uh, we also would like to recommend a one to two year trail extension. We thought that this would be a good opportunity for us to kind of leverage on what Johnson County has planned for the community. Um, and press feedback on that. And then the last thing, um, we, uh, really took into consideration that any additions and enhancements, uh, that might come under Park and Rec for the community, um, are always going to increase what falls on the desk of our one staff person for the department. And, um, we realized that the limitation of having just one staff person will make it difficult to add programming, uh, and so we would like you to consider adding, um, an additional staff person with an emphasis on, uh, increasing the programming. Erin is still working on the, um, annual report, but she did give me some wrong numbers if that will help you all, um, when you think through things. If you're interested, I can share them.
Yeah.
Um, so for fiscal year twenty five, uh, all told, and these are rough numbers. I know that I took them from her report and, um, put them in an Excel sheet, and I know I had a couple of things that were slightly off, but it's pretty close. Um, we had seven hundred seventy one total people register for different events and sports activities, that kind of thing. Um, five hundred seventy two kids, a hundred ninety nine adults. The registration fees came in just a little over twenty two thousand. And there were two hundred twenty six sessions or games, so activities, two hundred and twenty six different activities throughout the year. Uh, a hundred and forty six of those were for kids and eighty were for adults.
Then awesome.
There was twenty two thousand dollars brought in for fees.
Twenty two thousand sixty five. Is what I came up with looking at what she gave me.
Um, so you was, when you say a one to two year trail plan, I'm thinking of that we actually paved, pave in one or two years pave, get a paved trail.
Is it actually paving or just at least having, um, a plan to get to the page?
Start saving some money, allocate some money. We've got plenty of land for trails. And I know next summer Johnson County will build a trail from Iowa City. So I think that would be our first focus to put a trail front of the high school. To connect Iowa City to West Branch. That's a no brainer in my mind.
That's kind of what we feel too.
Yeah, we need to budget for that. Okay.
So is this in the order of priority?
No, it was just laid out. If we look at a shorter term, a medium term and a longer term, we picked our top priority for the three categories.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Did you want to talk about the mural?
It's up to you. I'm happy to.
It's on the agenda, so.
Oh, it is, I thought.
Is it?
Wait, so we were, we've talked about that. I think to do that, we'll have to do a resolution. So we're gonna put that on the next.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, I thought it was too. All right.
Something to look forward to. We went back and forth.
Well, just briefly, uh, just looking at it. It's, um, mural park, I mean, we came up with mural park, but that may not be totally appropriate. It could be an homage to a first responder park, or if a mural were put there for first responders, which you mentioned. I think that seems appropriate. So mural park may be jumping the gun if we name it mural park right away. I don't know.
My question was, what's the life expectancy of the mural that we have? And then are we painting ourselves in a corner of asking to continue to put murals up there?
Yeah, ten, ten years is a long time for a mural, I can tell you.
I can tell you, um, so I moved here from Benson and, um, they have a lot of murals in the community and they're painted on metal that's then affixed to the buildings. And, um, they have been a, the original ones have been a since two thousand, two thousand one. Um, they came back a few years ago, uh, and we touched up some of them, but for the most part, that's all the maintenance that's needed. They've got some that are painted directly on brick walls, but they're.
Okay, so.
It's on metal or they on plywood?
Plastic and it's on three quarter inch, ready to be applied with.
That whole naming thing's kind of on hold right now. Again, it's still.
We have a long term plan to depart for four weeks.
All right.
Oh, for what's in game.
Okay. Um, all right. Thank you, Erin and Erin. Um, John Sar Segretto.
Evening, Mayor Lotwin, councilmembers. My name is John Segretto. And, uh, I am here to, uh, propose uh, an upgrade to, um, property as the city's right of way. In front of my property, I've taken over possession of one fifteen North Fourth Street. And as you know, it has a rather sizable slope on the right away city side of that from the sidewalk down. And I was looking, I started out as a discussion for, uh, maybe putting a tree in and things, and I had, um, gotten some of the, uh, requirements and limitations and what the council and the city desires for the choosing of that. And then as I was going forward, um, I went ahead and had an estimate done by some landscaping, uh, companies. I've actually chosen one. And, um, they're very eager to begin with upon your proof of, hopefully your approval. So, uh, the idea is, um, of course, I have not figured out a way to get any younger in my lifetime. So, um, when I look at my neighbor Herb and I tell her he is amazing man at the age of eighty, but, um, uh, I really have no desires to climb up and down that hill if I meet the city's satisfaction as far as keeping it um, trimmed and such, because it is quite a chore. So, um, my, uh, I was hoping to have a discussion on, uh, putting in a retaining wall halfway down the hill, approximately seven feet down. Staying under, I believe there's a three foot requirement before it gets into something bigger. Um, and, uh, uh, there is a submission from, uh, Guild Landscaping. I believe, uh, you may or may not be aware of, but I think it's in the possession of the city. Um, and, uh, it would run the whole length of the property, um, on both the north side of the steps um, and south side of my steps in the, in the property in the city's right of way. And I think it meets all the requirements that the city might require, but I don't know until, you know, you discuss it and let me know. Um, I believe then the bottom, it would only far about a flat area, approximately a foot and a half to two feet, of which I would, um, plan to put down some garden paper, uh, plant a tree. Uh, my, the, the goal is also to get some shade on my property and, um, also to put shrubs and brush along there to beautify and aesthetically enhance the, the property. Um, there's just been a lot of work done there and, uh, barring any, um, failures of that said recent work, I'm grateful to say that I've had my lead line replaced just last summer and that was kind of nice. Sewer lines are all replaced and such like that, but I believe in utilities are further down on the hill and from below that intervention that we would do there, it would leave, I'd be guessing, uh, I'm approximating about seven, eight foot down to the curb. Um, and that could go stay the way it is or, um, maybe be considered. The landscaper suggested maybe another small tier halfway down that, but at any rate, it would be easier for me to maintain that and keep it mowed and shaved, you know, rather than trying to climb up or go down. Now, on the top side, then, the idea would be to level off the land up there. Do more gradual slope backfill or whatever I need to do so I can actually walk and mow it. Um, I worry now as it is, I watch for cars that are coming by because I'm letting the mower go down as far as I can and I'm pulling it back up. And, uh, of course, that requires some physical effort. Um, and I had just came off of some personal, um, uh, physical, uh, reconstructive surgery on my back and things like that was made me aware of my humanity and my limitations. So I hope that not only would this, uh, create the aesthetic effect and, uh, create a easier, uh, task for myself. Um, but it would also, uh, be in the city's interest to increase the aesthetics. And actually, we, I would think it re- reduced the risk of falls that presently exists on that slope if somebody was to go down it. There's nothing there to really stop them and, uh, they would go right on out to the street. So, um, that being said, I ask for and, and hope for um, some sort of amicable agreement that we could reach on that grounds.
So this wall's proposed, what, what size block are we looking at? The hundred and ten pound blocks or eighty pound blocks? So.
They would be a standard, I believe he mentions it, it's a standard deep construction wall block that has a, right? And it would be seated in the back. This is a, an engineering thing that they understand. I'm told it has to be anchored back into the wall, into the um, hill, and they would put drainage along there to make sure it wouldn't bow out or anything like that. But they would put the proper seating underneath their leveling and gravel and things like that. They would, um, actually go through and make sure that it was, uh, backfilled and, um, seated and all that. And the idea is.
Well, this was denied. Actually, you went for, did you go for a permit? We denied it. Is that what happened?
Well, I, I've and I, I'm sorry, I apologize for my negativity. So, um, I was not aware that I needed to go through this process, so I apologize for that. So, yes, I started at one point and I have been learning as I go along and I made some phone calls to people and trying to figure out where I'm supposed to be and what I'm supposed to do. And so I talked to the city, um, inspector. And then I guess he kicked it to an engineer. And, um, of course, uh, my feedback I got was that no one individual wants to be responsible for approving this. Mainly because it's in the city right of way. So here I stand. And so, and I understand, I don't know that this is something that happens. Um, I may be out on a limb forever to be by myself, but it, to me, it makes perfect sense, but.
I mean, I like the concept. The concept's great. I think we agree with that, but problem is, once this is built, it's kind of becomes our wall. We own it.
I know.
And if that's the case, it's on, it's on city property. So we really don't want a wall that's gonna start, you know, leaning and caving in over the next twenty or thirty years.
Right. If, well.
We have a straight bus, but that wasn't.
Just be the devil's advocate, look at it his way. This is our property. We don't want to build a wall on it, but we want him to take care of that mess.
Yeah, I know.
So it is a, a quandary. I believe that you have ongoing issues with my neighbors on that. At least they state that there is. And, um, I know that there's a particular neighbor and I get along with all my neighbors, um, but that it seems to be kind of going to why? So, and I really am trying to be, I just direct me in a direction that could be amicable for both of us, so I could maintain it. You know, that, um, that would be hap- that would be agreeable to you. Um, I guess there's turning it into prairie, like many other properties that do that, but I'm trying to avoid that. Um, but the idea.
Whose, whose stairway is that?
The stairway?
Is that yours?
Yeah, I returned, I returned a stairway that was originally there when I bought the property.
Is that a wooden stairway?
No, it's a concrete stairway.
Concrete.
I replaced the one that was there. The seller, um, was gonna made to replace it because I, I had the house inspected and the sewer line had problems. And so they, um, because of that, they had a, um, responsibility to fix it because now, since I discovered it on them, if they were going to try to sell the house to anybody else, they had to just claim it. So we went ahead and with the purchasing under the agreements that they would fix it. And as they got further down, they also found another leak down by underneath the street that they, you may or may not be aware that they pulled up part of the street and replaced it going into the city line there too, because it was leaking down there. So evidently Liberty Communications was said to have gone, pushed their lines through there and caused a tile break along there. So there was probably other properties that may have that same problem. I don't know. This is just a discussion, but, um, that would be open if that needs to be addressed, you know, from that point down, but.
Well, wouldn't that, wouldn't that stairway be in the, uh, city right of way?
It is. It is.
So was that where they're beginning?
It was there that the, the neighbors put in, I'm told by Herb there that they account all kicked together for a stairway down there. And it was getting pretty broken up. And so I told the seller I would take care of replacing it. And so at the time, there was so much other stuff going on over there with water lines and all the other things because of the new apartment complex. I just waited till everything was done. And as an added thing, I actually like I felt I had my lead lines replaced, which was really, really nice to you, but you know, I plan on staying on the property for a while and I plan on, um, doing some more work to keep the property viable and, uh, um, I'm just, uh, looking at something that might help both of us. I do understand your concerns about future responsibilities of the wall. Of which I can't say that I'm going to be alive twenty years from now, you know?
I'm in favor of the whole concept. I, I just don't want a little flimsy wall that's gonna start, you know, leaning and caving in and it toppling over in twenty years or ten years, which.
Have you seen?
If I was assured that maybe our engineer would approve the structure of it. Well, if it's so heavy enough big enough stone, I think.
My question would be, is there city ordinance against this?
Um, generally, yes, nothing's allowed in the right of way.
Okay.
So unless you guys wave it, and that's essentially what you try in the city.
Did we wave the stairway?
I don't, I don't recall. I don't know when that would have been put in, but likely that's probably was.
Well, once it was tore out, put in again, it should have been, it should have been reported, yes.
I said, oh, uh, my apologies. I'm not in trouble.
Not gonna nick one down.
Yeah, we're done.
No.
But, uh, you know, I did it with confidence because I, I went on the pre-existing, it looked there before, but I understand what you're saying. Um, but I did take responsibility myself to make sure it was well done and I put a railing on it to make it legal. Um, the neighbors are happy it's there. They like it, um, and such like that. Um, so, uh, yeah, I, I understand your concerns with the, the right of way. Um, I believe the contractor um, is reputable. It's a guild out of Hiawatha. And, um, with, if you would like me to get more input, I think he gave you, have you guys seen the submission of it or whatever? Is it?
Whatever we see on our, this is in our packet.
Right.
That drawing.
So I can certainly have him call somebody and let somebody and have the discussion on what you would require to make it be more of a longer term investment, but, um.
Dave, do you feel comfortable approving a wall? Even though it's under four feet? So under four feet. It doesn't have to be engineered. But it is in our property.
Uh, yes, for me, the, what this reminds me of now that I've thought about it for a while is there's a current lawsuit that the city is underway and it had nothing to do with the city at all. So it could be it's well maintained. It could be everything he did is right. But somebody just happened to trip and they're just gonna point fingers at the property owner and at the city, and it always goes to the city. And that's where I guess my fear would be is yes, common sense wise, maybe maybe it could reduce more falls, maybe it won't, but the fact of the matter is an insurance company is just going to point at who has the biggest pocket, which a lot of times is the safe. And that's what we're learning with, with the sidewalk issue that we had.
Is this going, so is this starting at the sidewalk? Or is it starting, where's it starting?
Middle of the hill. Across the length of the.
So is the top of it gonna be even with the sidewalk or is it?
Well, it's already above the sidewalk, so we bring it down to the level or a little below the sidewalk, leveled out to an even slope with the first six, seven feet, so I can walk and mow it. So it would actually increase a safety level, it'd be flatter further out. Then you'd have a wall that would only be three foot tall and then there'd be a flat spot below that that would stop anybody from falling further where now there would be nothing.
Well, if it's over thirty inches, it needs a guardrail.
Right.
So that's, that's over thirty inch.
Hey, I guess I'm not understanding this. There's, if I'm understanding, this is a set, almost seven feet from the sidewalk to the, the curb. And we're putting a three foot wall in there, that doesn't.
It's actually fifteen feet from the sidewalk to the curb.
Height twice.
Well.
So it's horizontal just.
So that. You can cut that in half, so.
It's going across, we're just taking out a flat spot, uh, the middle of the, of the parking, halfway down the parking, half the distance to this curb. Flattening it and what we need to do to flatten it, we'll put a wall against. That way it keeps the wall up and keeps that flat, so I can plant a tree per the city's requirements. And it would be on a level area there and I can put bushes or whatever like that to prevent erosion and it would actually stop falls. It would keep right now, the hill up on top by the sidewalks been dug up a couple of times last summer. It's kind of roly poly and things are going on up there and that needs to be addressed too. And I'm willing to do all of that, you know, at my expense that it, yeah, it is on your.
Well, Adam, you brought up that, um, if something would hap- if we were allowed this wall and something would happen, we'd be, um, in the gun sights. What would happen if someone's walking up that sidewalk and they trip and fall as does and come down that hill and land in the street?
They would still probably see us liable. If they were walking on the grass itself, then there's nothing they can point to the city because that's an actual built slope. So as silly as it sounds, we're more protected by doing, saying no and doing nothing than we are by saying yes and somebody wants to do something that's good, common sense wise and for the neighborhood. Those are unfortunately a lot of the decisions. Those are unfortunately a lot of the decisions that we have to make at the administrative office. It is what does your heart say and what does your brain say? And it's hard when they're, when they're conflicting. So the brain says, if we do something, then we're gonna be at risk. Brain says that we don't do anything, we won't be at risk, but obviously the heart says, he's trying to live his. So that's why it's kind of. I see it as a up to you guys to give direction on what you feel is best and what you want coming.
My other concern would possibly be that this could open a can of worms down the road that. Maybe the neighbor, oh, this looks really nice, let's do it here and let's do it here, or we do it in some other part of the town because this one did it here. Cause we do have a few other places in town that have the same.
We same. Almost to establish some sort of hilly vegetation that just, that doesn't require mowing or.
Well, I could think of kids. Some kids. You know, mowing this four or five times out of the year, probably a lot cheaper than building this wall, but.
Is this the same one that was full of poison ivy? Um five years ago?
They guess said you didn't want my old. All grass on, you wanted all my.
Yep.
Oh, that's. Brought me up.
Yeah, we've been having issues with this, this whole.
Maintenance of that, because I believe.
Whole block has the same issue.
Yeah.
And then you, and you went through and just rounded everything up, yeah?
We, we didn't do anything, we went through and made them.
And they just rounded everything up?
Yeah, they still, some of them sprayed out, some of them.
Right. Well. I get, I mean.
I think our inclination is probably to say no.
Yeah.
Probably not gonna let it happen. Well, it'll be tiny wall.
You're gonna save me thousands of dollars, you know, it's a, it's too bad it would look really great, but I understand, it's a precedent. You know, but I don't try or I don't know till I try. So um so I want you to know that I, that I care about my property and that um what I'll do is um, yeah, I'll just find a bunch of stuff.
I, I don't know, I, I'd be inclined to. Think about it a little more, cause if this is my property, I would just round everything up, kill it, and now you're gonna cause a re- erosion problem. And it's going to be the city's issue.
It's gonna be a plant or.
This is a plant.
I I mean.
This is an area that's been there for.
Yeah.
Eighty to a hundred years.
Kill everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're willing to sponsor it essentially, so it can be voted on.
I'm willing to. I'd like to see what the block is, I mean, I don't want those dollar twenty nine Menards blocks.
They need to be, well, they need to be a hundred pound blocks, the the heavy duty.
And you're gonna have Geo Grid to hold it back and everything. My other concern would be putting a tree in there that eventually the tree roots, we got. So that'd be my other concern.
Trees might wanna be on the other side of the sidewalk.
I'm not ready to say yes, but I'm not ready to say.
Yeah, I agree. Not helping him out at all.
Well, you're not here to help me out, I'm I'm here to, you know, just see if there's an amicable way. And I understand you guys are worried about um lawsuits and precedents, you know, um I guess uh.
Yeah, the ideal way would be to lower that whole sidewalk and put the wall on your side of the side.
Yeah.
No, there's a, what, seven million, nineteen million dollars worth of building going on across the street. This dude wants to put a wall in and make the street look all nice or I mean.
Yeah, I understand, I'm.
Well, you know, uh. I just heard that there was a rumor that we were kind of being taxed. My, our area town was being accused of being crappy looking. So I was just kind of thinking, maybe I would show my effort, kind of do what I can do to, to help everybody out. So I can make sure my property taxes and property value stays up there, so. Um but yeah, I get it, I understand. So thank you for your time. And um if you guys decide, uh let me know if I need to tell the uh contractor, if you'd like him to. Tell you exactly what kind of block, I know he's getting it from one of the um places in Corville, just north of Corville there.
King Block?
King Block, that's a decent.
That's a good block, the big.
And so uh he has full contact, but anyway, so, yeah. Okay.
Can I, can I just say, I do know that one of the the questions, sorry. Um for Dave Checkinger was that where the tree was going to actually be. And again, like Jerry said, if it was going to push it forward. That was, that was one of the questions. And then the other, the other thing for the permit side of things is, um yes, it's Jessica, sorry. Is that the drawing that we were given for the permit did not show exactly what. Was going to happen. And as you can see, like, that's what we were gotten and that, that is not what was required. So those are just like the few things as to why it got denied.
You wanna get into a little more of the weeds of the detailed drawing? I mean, this is a detailed drawing, I guess, but.
I think, I think when, and Dave is there, so he can probably tell you more. I think he wanted more of a detailed as to what the side of it was going to look like, where the trees were gonna be, like what the actual plan of it was.
The tree is just a tertiary discussion at this point, you know? I was thinking it would be a nice added thing on there. Um you guys, I believe, per your um restrictions on that, you have certain trees, you approve certain sizes. So I mean, if we kept it down to a certain size, under twenty foot or something like that, if the trunk wouldn't get that big where it would be an issue. And I'm certainly willing to put it wherever you guys would want it, so it wouldn't cause any further issues with the wall either. But uh um the wall came out of uh um just me thinking that if I had a flat spot there that I could. Try to occupy with something other than my arms reaching up with a weed whacker or a mower trying to reach down from above. That that would be the best.
I guess I could say, just give us a little more detail of a plan and elevation, I guess, and. Is that.
Or that changes the fact that it's still a city wall.
It's still.
He's still responsible for it.
Yeah.
So even if it's a good wall, you don't have it on the rest of the properties. Then you have to go through this with every other property of them, or if somebody comes in and wants to put in a block, that isn't the same. With a different contractor, are you gonna allow it because you're gonna get asked? Any of these that have the walls for those whole.
See, they now have to pay for in engineering fees and architectural fees. You may be no automatically, I would, with those facts that Matt brought up. So I would, I'd hate to make somebody do more work if you guys are leaning pretty strongly.
Yeah.
So we're still probably a no.
Yeah.
Probably a no.
Okay. Well. Don't know till you try. I get it, thank you guys for your time.
Okay, Kim, Gaskell.
Thank y'all have a copy, I'm just gonna make a statement tonight here. I'm Kim Gaskell, sure you know me by now, Catherine Gaskell's daughter. I'm here to ask the council, uh I'm here to ask counsel that the city of West Branch feels legally constitutes. My, our Catherine Gaskell property to be within the proposed slum and light boundaries of the city of West Branch. Now Kevin commented, I believe at the last council meeting and we traded emails earlier today, and I think Adam mentioned this at our meeting. Either with Dave or Roger last week, I can't remember. Uh that each and every parcel does not have to meet the definition to be included in a particular area. So what I'm asking, so I interpret this as saying that when I read through Iowa code. After four oh three. And doesn't line up with the definitions from my interpretation, that's what I'm interpreting Kevin's comment to say. And therefore I want to take another step and have council explain since you all voted and passed this through. What legally constant uh constitutes my, our mom's area and Shirley's too, Shirley can't be here tonight, I'm sure you're all aware of that. But um legally constitutes that to be able to be a part of that. Area or as you call it, um let's see here. So that's what my ask is, to use the terms of all of protocol. So we'd like that a written response on that and a letter then maybe a week from today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Fair enough or not, yeah. Alright, alright.
Okay, let's move on. Third reading of ordinance eight twenty nine, I'm in chapter one sixty five of the code. Incorporated residential livability flexible front yard allowances, this is a final, you know, from the motion. Second. No changes at all since last time, so. Kind of excited to see how this pans out. Soon. See how it pans out, so. Any other comments? Let's go ahead and vote then.
Counselperson Dean?
Yes.
Stillman?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Uh Sexton?
Yes.
Forhan?
Yes. Oh, resolution twenty five seventy six, approving liability insurance proposal with ICAP. Uh motion, so.
Turn it.
Racy insurance.
I have a question. I know we, we did the, the whole bid process. Whenever we got ICAP the very first time. And is it something that, are we getting bids every year or are we just taking their?
So with ICAP, we're locked in for a number of years. And if we leave them, you can help me Kevin, but there's a penalty if we leave them.
Yeah, I don't know.
ICAP is really weird because when ICAP started, there was no one insuring any communities whatsoever. And so this nonprofit of ICAP was started in part of the, the. The part of the contract, when you're part of this group, is that you can't just jump and leave directly. Um what I want to, in the next two years or so, would I want to take votes? Yes, but I think we're locked in for at least another two years, otherwise we will be heavily penalized.
Is this a private insurance company or is this a?
Private nonprofit.
Private nonprofit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's run by, yeah.
There's no. Okay, so. Being a nonprofit, they could keep the fees low, I would imagine.
It's kind of like a co-op, I think.
Yeah, so is there any chance? Um of, what do you call it? You pay your fee, you pay your dividends at the end of the year, you get some back if, if you don't make claims, this.
We do get a small.
Term for that, I don't know what it is, but.
Yeah, I know, we do get.
Yeah.
We do get a small amount back, I wouldn't say it's major, but there is a portion we get back. Um Heidi would know and she's out today, so she's not feeling well.
My only comment would be, let's say, well, we, we obviously got to do it now, but at some point. We're not doing our deal due diligence if we're not price checking at least every couple of years or something like that. I mean, you know.
Yeah, two or three years, we need to go out for bids or.
Yes, just price check, you know. And as long as they know we're doing that, then that might.
You might find their mouth be anybody that will give you the whole package either, so. And, and that's, I mean, that's.
But those are the things we need to know for when to spend eighty seven thousand dollars of the taxpayer's money.
One hundred percent. Or what you're saying, I just want you to know when you switch insurances, cause I did it in Garner from ICAP to EMC or EMS, yeah.
EMC.
That took like six months of admin time, so. Definitely support you and it saved Garner money, so if that is the case.
Well, I, I remember when we did the switch, we got ticked off at our insurance company about something, I can't remember what it was.
It was the fire department.
Yeah.
They weren't taking the fire department.
Yeah, and so that's why we left, left and it was a, was a local insurance company that we've been doing business with for years and years and years.
If, if it's at all helpful, this is not much more than what a much smaller town is paying.
I, I, I'm sure of that, but we still don't even know that.
Absolutely. And I did pull up last year, just for some reference, I knew Heidi wouldn't be on, wouldn't be here tonight. So last year it was eighty thousand five thirty one, it's about a twenty five hundred dollar increase from last year, everything's gone up. Several, several of them were up two hundred forty, two hundred thirty five, a couple of them were down, so it was really not that big a jump, if that helps at all.
Five percent would be, yeah.
Yeah, that's not a motion of a jump. In seven. Climate. Okay, we got a motion to approve, let's go ahead and vote.
Counselperson Dean?
Yes.
Stillman?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Forhan?
Yes. Our resolution twenty five seventy seven, approve a final disposition of a utility bill. Between three twenty South First Street, West Branch, motion.
I don't know.
Second someone?
Second.
We will die in lack of second. Apparently I was in on this discussion a while ago and I'm having a hard time remembering.
Well.
So I.
Is it ten years ago, is that what this is saying?
It's, it's been ten years, so I look back through um Leslie's note, she, she noted, and took some really good notes on it, as you can see in her packet. But so yeah, two thousand fourteen fifteen, there was a tenant that lived in this house, there was a faulty basement toilet. And so it ended up. Giving him about a three hundred seventy four dollar bill for, for one month. And so they payment arrangements were made, um and then there, there was a lien placed eventually on the house and it was paid in full. Um new tenants moved in in two thousand fifteen, the first few months were fine. And then over the next couple of months, there was, um again, faulty toilet, the basement was used. Landlord did learn the lesson the first time to make sure it wasn't used. So the, there was a ninety two thousand gallon in one month, and so the bill was thirteen hundred and sixty eight dollars. Another month, it was fifty three thousand gallons, so it, it was a bill of seven hundred ninety one dollars. And so the tenants asked how they could work with it, talked to the landlord and asked if he would a- assist with the bill to try to get it paid off. They ended up staying in the house, set up payment arrangements to pay their monthly bill, which all of their other bills were pretty much a standard monthly bill. And there's a really good spreadsheet in there with that as well. Um but they paid a little above that, so they ended up paying about a, about three hundred forty three above what they were making the monthly bill to go towards. These two large bills, um because the landlord said, you're on your own. Um I guess you guys had a discussion in two thousand seventeen about it and going ahead and talking about writing it off. And at that time, the administrator Redmond didn't want to allow it on the, on the council agenda to be approved and taken off. So it is sad, pretty much.
Actually, normally what we do right in this situation, we do income offset and then after a number of years, that's when we bring it to you guys. So I would say what I always told them is five years, because that's how long we keep financial records. I don't know if that's ideal or not, so Alicia found this one with Fuzzles' note, that's been ten years, so we're asking. She's asking that to have us write it off, cause it's been ten years.
What's left on?
Um about seventeen hundred dollars, just over seven, I think it's seventeen, seventeen hundred thirty dollars and seventy four cents.
Is it the same landlord?
Not anymore, the property was.
The landlord wasn't fixing the toilet. And then he sold the house.
That's when.
Should have made him pay for it.
Yeah, that's when it should have.
That's when we made the mistake.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't know about it.
Yeah.
And so at this point, we can't put a lien.
Yeah, remember the rules landlords have now for water bills, water or utility bills. He's two, two, two things, if the landlord says the tenant's responsibility, can't put a lien on the landlord's property. You can only go after the tenant. Number two, if, if a property is sold, before you put the lien on, you can't put the lien on property. So those are two new laws that have been in effect probably since that, you know, nineteen.
They don't call the city and ask for assessing water bill in, before the closing. And they say, and they say this needs to be added to the closing.
Tighter, so you need to get the, you need to get the.
Doesn't happen, does it?
No, we need to get the, so once the closing happens, you can't go away, you can put a lien on somebody's properties if the same person moved to a different residence in town. Otherwise, yeah, that, you can't, you can't put it on, oh, I'm gonna lean on the next property.
This doesn't sound like something I would have agreed to.
I mean, either, that's why, it's apparently we, I, I did.
But these other laws have talked about since that, they've been changing those.
Well, no, but I'm talking about letting anybody off the hook.
Right.
That's, it's just not something I would have ever agreed to.
I've been here since two thousand twelve and I can't remember anybody.
I know this landlord and I would not have let him off the hook.
I don't remember anybody ever getting that.
No.
Free water.
We just had that one over here.
Yeah, we had one.
A few years ago.
And review that, yeah.
At the end of the day, this is ten years old, this is. Water under the bridge, apparently.
Well, we can't get it out of the current owners, because they got nothing to do with it.
Right, so. Let's let's forgive it, let's get it off our books, so it's not out there no more.
I agree. Is that what our uh? Is that what the uh? Resolution says?
Vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's vote then.
Counselperson Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Stillman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Orhan.
Yes.
Cleaning up the books. Resolution twenty-five seventy-eight, approve a revised agreement for solid waste recycling with uh. LRS. Oh, motion, so, sorry. So what's going on here?
So biggest change, I would say, and Kevin can kind of talk to. At least the termination clauses, um. But there's a couple of changes they wanted to make. We turned almost all of them down. The one thing that I did that is a difference is. Which I guess I would say my admin decision is. Due to the changes in the tariff system, China is not buying recyclables. So. Now it costs them. Money to dump off. Recyclables versus in the past. It wouldn't cost them as much, so they want to choose to go to their place. Rather than increasing our bills. So. That's. About the garbage too, or just recycle?
They have a dump site, a different dump site, they would take this to now?
Yes, for recycling.
So here's what I don't like about it. Is the. The word dump site. Because. That means they could take it to the dump. And then if they're taking it to the dump, then there's no sense in doing the recycling.
That's where essentially it's going to go, because no one's buying our recyc, this happened seven years ago, so.
Yes.
The odds are that's where it's been going all along, yeah.
I, yeah, there was a, there was an article three, four years ago that basically said eighty-five percent of the cycles. Went to that.
Going to landfill?
Because there's no market for it.
Yeah, I haven't seen it.
It costs more money to get rid of recyclables than just make it trash.
Yeah.
So what's our, what's our problem with this change then? We'd still like them to force them to recycle? Or can we?
You know, I I I don't know, I mean, at the end of the day, if they're not recycling it, then. Wh- what are we doing? We're just charging our residents another three or four dollars a. A month to have a recycling can. An additional garbage can. Which is a good deal, as long as you're allowed to put garbage in it.
It's cheaper than the regular garbage can, right?
Yeah.
The recycle can?
So they're asking us to drop the recycling part? Or no?
Yeah, no, just where recycling goes.
We're giving them, we're letting them have the option to work to take recycling wherever they want. Or basically.
Correct. Which could impact the landfill. It's good.
I don't know, we control how we can control. Where they take it anymore. We. Possess a bundle to tell him, force them to take it. They're able, force them to take it to a recycling center.
Theoretically with that arm, they're not going through it anymore, anyway, you can be throwing garbage in there anyway, as long as it kind of looks like recycling.
I don't know where it goes. Yeah, I thought it went to Davenport.
Yeah, the Davenport is the one that had the single stream where you dump everything, they they people sort it out.
Yeah, they used to have that Cedar Rapids too.
Yeah, I think it's basically Davenport now, or Quad City somewhere.
Since, I would say the car.
Yeah. Yeah, they're gone.
Lit up on fire?
Yeah.
This one does.
Okay, I don't have a problem with this, then I know.
Well, we're gonna get paid. Or we're gonna get charged. Don't say we say.
I guess, my question is, is it cheaper to dispose of it as garbage or is it cheaper? Is it, does that recycle?
Recycling, I think.
Cheaper recycling right now.
Yeah. So it's. And then we may take it to the landfill. They're not taking it to the transfer station, I know that.
They're not taking recycling, they are taking the garbage, I checked.
Yeah, I haven't seen any recycling at the transfer station. So they're taking it somewhere.
That's right, that's right, I guess it was going to Quad City, so that's where I know some of the Johnson County stuff goes. That's single street.
Well, let's see if they can give.
They used to have a city cart, they used to have a place in Cedar Rapids and did it too.
Yeah.
Well, let's let them figure it out and maybe they'll. Get it figured out.
This is in their five-year contract?
Yes.
So. They can't come back to us in a year or two and say, hey, well. This is costing us more to do your recycling, we want more money.
Um, I think they can, because we we even hardly got a contract from them once and they've already come back, now we're changing it.
Yeah, because we have a, we have a reopener after the. Two years recheck to make sure that they're following the rules. So we can get out of that for two.
I would say in theory, unless there's something drastic, I don't think they can increase rates or the the rates, the rates, yeah.
The rate.
They have it built in there, the rates will increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that.
But is it still, is it still the two years, we're locked in for two years and then the rate will?
But the first year, the rates are the same, correct? It's locked in for the same rates for this first year, I'm fine.
All right, let's vote then.
Counselperson Dean.
Yes.
Stillman.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Orhan.
Yes.
Miller.
No.
So I can dump down the thirty-five gallon garbage can. And put my garbage in my recycling.
No, don't start doing that.
Okay.
We don't know, it could still be recycled, it's possible. Yeah, resolution twenty-five seventy-nine, hiring Harrison Goodell as a streets maintenance worker. And setting the salary for the position. Motion. So moved.
Second. Matt, do you have an issue with this? Get along with this.
Yeah, not saying it, man.
Who's gonna, who's he answering to, Matt or somebody else?
It'd be, you're a nice guy, someone else. Okay, I think it's a good choice, so. Get a chance. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Alicia.
Counselperson Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Orhan.
Yes.
Stillman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Oh, this is exciting, resolution twenty-five eight. Setting a public hearing for the plan specs estimate of cost and form of contract. Ordering bids and directing notice. For the.
Flood improvement channel widening project.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd never get to say those words.
I have something. Yeah, this is for the city attorney. Can we exclude Boomerang from these bids?
No.
Oh.
You cannot exclude bidders.
Yeah, I thought we, I thought we were happy with what they were doing up on the hill.
Well, if you can find them, they haven't been there.
I was gonna say, I was, I drove down there the other day because somebody said they were concerned about how low the road was.
It's, well, part of the issue was that they had the existing road and then they dropped it down to the new road. And it was like this much of a steep incline, you couldn't get, you couldn't even get a Corvette in there without dragging, that's how bad it was. It's much better, thank you, Dave. I think we can trust them, we'll find out.
So, having, here we know further discussion, let's vote this.
Counselperson Dean.
Yes.
Stillman.
Yes.
Or, uh, Orhan.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
All right.
Eight years.
Might have been longer than that.
No, it wasn't, two thousand nineteen. What, when we started? Third, that's yes.
No.
Well, we talked about a week.
Before that, yeah, before that.
That two thousand nineteen was the time that Tom said we needed five and. And asked Kevin and Kevin said. We said first of April and Kevin said we'll work backwards from there, that was in nineteen.
That was, yeah, because we had been, we had been going for ten years before that.
Same sense of process.
Yeah.
Only thing we're, only thing left waiting for is your bridge.
We, we, yeah, we wanted, we wanted shovels in the dirt in. By, by May.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll have that, you know. May six years from when we started.
All right, let's talk about open containers for Hoover's Hometown Days. So it looks like the committee would like to. Allow open containers. I don't know if it's a specific area. Or the entire Main Street.
So it's for next year, I told them no for this year. As it was too close to the event for us to perform for it. So what I'm looking for is direction on if council is open to it, because I've heard. Strong opinions that are against it. And what I don't want to do is spend four or five months on a policy and then council's against it automatically.
Well, we get, um.
That's our chief.
I apologize, I'm dirty, I had a battery that uh wouldn't let me get here, uh I'm I'm totally against it, sheriff's office is against it. Um, the the problem, there's a couple of problems that come in, one is that if we did this ordinance. And that that's great, we did that ordinance and I ordered my guys, we're not writing tickets for that, it's not going to prevent the sheriff's office or the state patrol from doing that. So we're kind of setting the precedent of, yeah, you're okay with. With blue shirts, but if it's tan or brown, like you better dump that out, like we just can't do that, second all. The second thing is, it, there is a a cat out of a bag situation, when you put, when you let that cat out of the bag, it's really hard to put it back in. And, um. I personally do not think that it is in the best interest of Hoover Hometown Days, I don't know how it adds to the family feel of what we're trying to do. I don't know how that that adds, also, if we allow. Um, open containers, what prevents coolers from coming in and and the whole idea of Hometown Days is. Supporting the fire department and and supporting our local businesses, and I don't know how. You know, the police department, we're not going to regulate and check and make sure, well, that that's cooler beer, you can't have that, you know, so I I'm. If, the only way I would be in favor of it would be is if it was like strongly regulated, similar to what like stolen beef days has where. It is regulated from here to here and we've got.
Fenced to.
And we have deputies and police officers on each side and uh and and it's well known. What the borders are.
Yeah, we got a fire department that fences it all in, you want to drink beer, go to the fire department.
They fence it in twice.
That's. So you can't. We don't enter the streets.
That's, that's my take.
Thanks.
So, can I say one thing though? Yeah, for this year, so, just so everybody knows, this year. It can go across the park. You can have an open container anytime across the street in in the park. So that's, that's.
But it it it's going to be sold at the fire station, close, walk across the street or a federal ground, there's nothing.
That's the plan, I just want everybody to know that federal ground. You can take a cave, you can take, oh, maybe not a cave, you can take a cooler in there, drink beer anytime during the day you want. So that's what's going to happen this year too, is they can go to the grocery store and buy it, they can bring coolers in there. They can come to us and buy it and walk across the street and open up this one. But we don't have any, I mean, that's, that's what the property is, so. I want you guys to know.
That is also. Open fenced in. Ground, so.
No fence, no.
No fence, but it is fenced. By sidewalk. Their property is fenced in.
And they've been out, put up signs around the perimeter and the permit, asking alcohol not to be that whole, you know, go to their. Execution.
Well, just, just so you guys know, that's happening, that's the plan this year, I know.
You can't go out of that.
Always the only way, but it's never happened. Yeah, I mean, with us. With a big thing going on.
It's a law that nobody, it's a rule that nobody knows about.
I knew about it.
You can drink, go now, go right now.
They used to have concerts over there. Take a cooler with a couple beers and I asked, I asked Pete about it, he says, well, we don't want you getting slammed and dropped over here, but you know.
It's, it's, this isn't stolen beef days. It's not going to be like that, and even stolen beef days isn't what it used to. Yeah, drive home. It's, it's not going to be like, so the hootenanny is what this is all about.
I.
Maybe go buy a beer at the fire department, walk across with it and and listen to the band and feel the heat.
I think that was the original plan, but what was taught to me was it would be from the Black Roads to the fire station. Would be open container. And that's, that's a long distance.
Yeah, that's, that's on public.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're kind of saying no then, right? Sounds like, I'm a no.
I'm a no.
It's all we.
I don't know.
City Administrator.
I'm just letting you know, getting a few calls from Greenview residents on the lights, and so I'm just updating residents as much as I can. With those lights. Um, so far, those who were opposed to the lights. Don't have lights in their property, but I can't guarantee. There won't be one or two. That says we don't want lights. So. As usual, that's what happens when it's in your yard. People don't want it.
So that's, so you got it?
Yep, yep.
Devin?
Ah, yeah.
Dave. You got paperwork that I see?
Oh, yeah, uh. Not much new, uh as we discussed, uh Boomerang, they had pulled off last week in that, uh, this weekend. They haven't been, uh, working out there too much, they're supposed to return back and work on that south end. Finish up the storm sewer and get that graded and start putting concrete down. That will help with that, uh Meadows Part Six Dirt Pile. Already get that moved, uh North Side, they did get anything, everything north of Serenity on that ultimate. Completed except for the trail, maybe get the driveways put back and the drill section through the driveways, homeowners have their land just back. Um, they did a pretty good job, they fought up there and getting that done. And making sure that they had access for those people, so. That was probably the most complicated area, as far as driveway access, the intersection will be fun. Uh, that'll get pretty tight into phases. But, um, we'll try to get an updated schedule for council in the next meeting. I'll get you updated on that, uh Meadows, they were putting in subgrain last week, uh should have things pretty close, they submitted the final plat, I've looked that over, they have it. Ready to go as soon as we get, um, all paperwork postponed on that. But they will be waiting for that dirt pile to get moved, so we can get. Last few things taken care of up there, so that's really all I have, we already talked about the the green whitening, so I don't want to give any. Into that too much. We're moving forward.
Um, the sewer and water. At Cedar Johnson, that's got to go across the road, right, to the west? At Cedar Johnson, that's got to go across the road, right, to the west? Who does that? Is that part of the contract?
Yes, that is part of the city's contract at Orange Street to put the sewer and water across the street.
Okay.
Uh, and that was a coordination issue, we got done first, uh.
Yeah.
But they hooked up to it if, uh, they got it first, we take it across and look up what they left.
That's got to happen first before it ends up more backfill.
Yes, the pipe that drew will finish the storm sewer and get that put in. And don't get gradient comes.
Did they get the sewer going down, done yet?
Uh, there's a couple of paperwork items that we're still trying to get that are just. Technical things that we have to have for SRF compliance, but they're nine to nine point nine. Just a couple of things that we get those taken care of.